This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. This is Alderman Berry. This is the City of Warrenville City Council Special Meeting. It is Monday, March 23rd, 2020. It's 7:00 PM. This meeting is entirely via electronic means and not at City Hall. Please note that this meeting is also being recorded. Elected officials, when speaking, please announce your last name before you begin speaking, and when you're finished, please state that you are finished. We need a roll call, please, from Clerk Larson.
Alderman Ashauer? Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Vavir?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman? Alderman Goodman? She's probably still on mute. Someone just popped out. They may have lost. Alderman Kreschel?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Sorry, it's Alderman Goodman. I just dropped off and came back.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And now do the attendance.
Treasurer Brenner? I'll come back. City Attorney Leniman?
Treasurer Brenner is here.
Okay, Brenner's here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. City Attorney Leniman?
I'm here.
Administrator Coakley?
I'm here.
Assistant City Administrator White?
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toronto?
I'm here.
Finance Director Kevin Dolstrand?
I'm here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer?
I'm here.
Deputy Public Works Director Phil Kuppler?
I'm here.
And Clerk Larson?
Great.
President.
Good. Thank you, Clerk Larson. I just wanted to discuss why Mayor Brummel is not here. I guess many of you do know that the mayor had emergency surgery late Friday evening. He's still in the hospital, I understand, at this time, and therefore is not able to be here. So we wish him well, speedy recovery. And now Alderman Goodman is going to make a motion. Alderman Goodman?
This is Alderman Goodman. I move to appoint Alderman Berry as temporary chairman for the March 23rd, 2020 City Council meeting.
Second by Alderman Davalos. You have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, under God, liberty, and justice for all. Very good. Okay. Okay. Now, we're going to go on to citizens' comments. If anyone from the public is wishing to speak, please announce yourself with your name and address. Please speak slowly and clearly so we can capture your information. Once we have everyone wishing to speak, I will call on you one by one to proceed with your comments. Do we have anyone from the public? Okay, we have no one from the public who would like to speak this evening. That's very unusual. Okay. So now on to official and staff comments. Obviously, the mayor is not here. Clerk Larson? Okay. Treasurer Brenner?
No, with what?
No comment? Is that what you said?
No report.
Oh, no report. Very good.
Report.
Okay. Alderman, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call on you each individually. If you'd like to make a comment, please do so. If not, please say no comment. Alderman Ashauer?
Stay well, everybody.
Aye. Alderman Vavir?
No comment.
Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I would just like to quickly thank all of the people associated with the city and the police and all our departments for doing their jobs in these trying conditions and how much the public appreciates them keeping that going.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Davalos. Alderman Goodman? Alderman Goodman, do you have a comment?
Yes, I just want to thank all the first responders who are out there doing their jobs in difficult circumstances.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Goodman. Alderman Kreschel?
No comment.
Alderman Widener?
Yes, I'd just like to wish everyone to stay well and healthy and a speedy recovery to Mayor Brummel. And also, great thank you to the city staff, city services, and all the workers who are helping us out during this time of need.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Widener. Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
Thank you. I would just like to say that, don't forget, everyone has been sent a letter regarding Census 2020. Please make sure that you open that envelope and follow your directions to go online and complete the census. It's very simple. It takes five minutes. And it's very important that everyone be counted. So I'd like to remind the public and the Aldermen, anyone listening, please complete your census. Thank you. Okay. Administrator Coakley?
Thank you. Excuse me. A couple of quick comments. Just thank you, everybody on the phone and at the meeting tonight, for your patience and cooperation as we learn how to hold meetings in this whole new environment so we can do them electronically. I think we're doing pretty well so far, but it's a whole new process for all of us. Second, I'll echo the comments of the Aldermen. Thank you to all the staff that, or all the city employees that are doing a great job right now, continuing to provide the critical services to our community. Some are working remotely, some are working here. Obviously, police, public works, and our inspector staff, along with a few others, are working on site, but most are working remotely. But they're continuing to provide services. Thirdly, on Friday, to assist our local businesses, some of the restaurants that have liquor licenses, Mayor Brummel issued riders to the existing liquor licenses so that local restaurants may temporarily sell beer and wine, along with food orders for carryout and curbside service. It's only for carryout, curbside only, no delivery. But that will be a benefit. A lot of towns around us are doing the same thing, and it helps to get more business to our local businesses. The last thing, this will come up on the agenda perhaps later if there's questions, but I'll be working with senior staff this week and going all the way through April to look at expenditures that can be delayed and assessing what the fiscal condition is going to be based on the national and regional changes in our economy that are related to COVID-19. But that noted, it's too early to be able to provide any reasonable recommendations for changes to the proposed budget. So as you'll note later in the agenda, I'm recommending we stay the course at this time, and we'll keep monitoring and updating you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Brooke Leniman?
Hello, everyone. First of all, I just want to thank the city staff. It's been tremendous during this time, and we've been working closely with them. I just want to thank them for thank them for their dedication. I'm sorry, I had a phone glitch there for a second. Secondly, for the record, I want to say that this conference call meeting is taking place pursuant to the authority granted in Governor Pritzker's Executive Order Number 202007, which suspended during the duration of the executive order certain requirements imposed by the Illinois Open Meeting Act. Specifically, the executive order suspended participation is permitted.
City Attorney, are you there? I think her phone got dropped.
Can you not hear me? Oh, we can now.
Now we can. Okay, we didn't hear you.
Did you not hear me before?
Some of it.
We've heard you all the way up to when you mentioned Governor Pritzker's
The order number.
The order number.
Executive order and the number.
And the number, and then that's when it dropped off.
I apologize. I'll just finish the rest of the statement just for, I just want to make this clear on the record, that Governor Pritzker's Executive Order Number 202007 suspended during the duration of the executive order certain requirements imposed by the Illinois Open Meeting Act. Specifically, the executive order suspended the requirement that members of a public body be physically present at a meeting in the conditions and restrictions limiting when remote participation is permitted. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, on to the approval of the agenda. Alderman Widener?
Yes, Alderman Widener, motion to approve the agenda for the March 23rd, 2020 City Council Regular Special Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos. We have a motion and a second. A roll call, please. No?
A voice vote.
A voice vote? I'm sorry.
We should do a roll call.
We're going to have to do a, we have to do a roll call on every vote because we don't know who's saying what. So at this time, we're going to do a roll call. Clerk Larson will do that.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, then we actually have no minutes to approve tonight. And now on to the regular agenda. Item A is accept staff recommendation and approve the creation of a part-time emergency management coordinator position and authorize staff to recruit and fill the position immediately. We have Police Chief Ray Toronto.
Probably should have a motion and a second to start the discussion of regular agenda items for the special council meeting. You suggest somebody makes a motion and a second.
They're not specifically taking it off.
No, these are all regular agenda items. We're not doing consent at all
Sorry.
because of the phone call. Sorry.
I'm, yep.
For getting there.
Okay, so we need a motion, yes.
Okay.
Okay, this is Alderman Goodman, and I would like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation and approve the creation of a part-time emergency management coordinator position and authorize staff to recruit and fill the position immediately.
Second by Alderman Davalos.
Alderman Vavir, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now on to
Alderman Widener, excuse me. Did the police chief want to make comment on this item?
Yes. That's what I was going to do. Police Chief Ray Toronto, do you would like to talk about this item?
Thank you. Excuse me, Alderman Berry. As was discussed at the March budget meeting, I submitted a decision package to create and fill this position based on the fact that one of our full-time police officers had resigned in August of 2019 and had served as the emergency management agency coordinator. Based on that, we have nobody currently at the department that has the qualifications or expertise to fill that position. This has become a very specialized position that requires a tremendous amount of training and expertise, and it will not only help us with the city's emergency operations plan, but also to make sure that all of our required city employees are fulfilling their obligation with regard to training with the National Incident Management Protocols that are required, as well as some of the elected officials. This proposal was initially looked at to require approximately 20 hours per week at a rate of $25 per hour. However, this was submitted prior to this COVID-19 pandemic. So initially, this position may require additional hours in excess of the 20 hours per week. I have submitted a decision package. It should be in your agenda packet tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have those.
Okay, Alderman, do you have any questions? If you do, please announce your name first and then your question. I guess we have no questions at this time. I guess we'll have a vote. Clerk Larson, if you would take a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye. Okay. Now on to B. Would somebody like to make a motion? An Alderman?
This is Alderman Goodman. I will make a motion to accept staff recommendation and authorize the city administrator to enact certain personnel policy provisions due to the COVID-19 pandemic as follows. One, allow full-time employees to use their paid time-off benefits to supplement their pay. Two, to negotiate similar applicable benefits for full-time employees who are covered under a collective bargaining agreement. And three, to authorize up to 60 hours of paid sick time for part-time employees to remain in effect until December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Alderman Widener?
We have a motion and a second. City Administrator Coakley will discuss this item.
Thank you. You have a very detailed memo in your packet, but basically, several things. Obviously, employees are being required to be quarantined or possibly work from home, or some are having to be home because of childcare issues, because the schools have closed, and they don't have any other options right now. This is happening to every business and every government across the country, especially in Illinois and the states that have closed down everything. As you'll note also, President Trump signed what the Congress had passed. He signed it on March 18th. It's called the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. It expands the FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, as well as creating or adopting the new Emergency Sick Leave Act. There's certain requirements under there. It becomes effective April 2nd. There's certain requirements for all employers, including City of Warrenville and all other governments and all private business, to pay people now for all of those circumstances and other ones related to COVID-19 coronavirus that we're dealing with. The city staff is recommending some additional things above and beyond that. You've heard them in the motion, so that we can make sure our employees continue to be paid. It's very important. There's hourly employees as well as hourly employees fall into one category, part-time into another. They don't normally have benefits. Hourly employees have benefits, but don't normally get paid if they don't work. And we also have some exempt salaried folks that have perhaps used their sick time or vacation time already and wouldn't have any other leave time. So we're trying to make sure, like every other employer in the country is right now, that we don't leave our employees destitute or having to go find other employment while we're getting through this situation. That's kind of the broad brush strokes of what we're proposing here. There's different categories and details based on the type of situation they're facing or the employee, and we'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, Alderman, if anyone has a question?
This is Alderman Goodman. I guess my only question would be, are we going to have it on our agenda to reconsider expanding sick time longer than that if necessary? Can we make a point of revisiting this item?
If the situation occurs, yes. We would bring that back.
Okay, that's good. I'm done.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote. Clerk Larson?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. On to C. Can we have a motion, please?
This is Alderman Goodman. I would like to make a motion to accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and extend the duration of the March 16th, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular special or emergency meeting of the city council.
Alderman Davalos, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Administrator Coakley will bring this forward.
Thank you. The original emergency declaration signed by Mayor Brummel a week ago Monday is included, copies included in your packet, along with the ordinance you had adopted that same night at the city council meeting last week. It is only, that particular declaration was only good for seven days or until the next city council meeting, which is both tonight. So the request and the recommendation is to extend it. Certainly, this situation with the COVID-19 pandemic is not anywhere near over. It's going to extend for a while, but we do not know how long. So we're asking for it to be extended. The next regularly scheduled meeting in the city council, which I believe will be held because there's budget issues to have, is on April 6th. So that would be how long this would go, and then we would ask for another extension at that point, I anticipate, unless something changes, but I don't foresee that.
Any other questions? No other questions? We have a motion and a second. We would have a roll call. Clerk Larson?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Now on to D, discussion of the FY 2021 Proposed Budget. We have Finance Director Kevin Dolstrand. Kevin, do you have anything to discuss at this time?
I do not have anything to add at this time, but we can certainly answer any questions any of the council members might have. Remember that they can also reach out to the administrator's office to schedule one-on-one meetings with the administrator and myself.
Okay, great. Alderman, if you have any questions, please speak up.
This is Alderman Goodman.
Yes, Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. I think that our future budget discussions are likely to be difficult, especially if meetings from now until the time the budget needs to be passed are going to be conducted over the phone, which makes it difficult to have real conversations about some of the choices that we're going to need to make in this budget. I think that although, as the city administrator already said, we know that there are going to need to be some changes in our revenue projections and that this budget is not in as good shape as we thought before when we thought that it was not necessarily in great shape. I'm particularly concerned about the role of a communication coordinator, and I think that we are really seeing right now the lack of having a communication coordinator in this time of crisis particularly. I think when there's a double-page spread in the Daily Herald today talking about all the things that the City of Aurora and the City of Naperville and the City of Wheaton are doing to promote their businesses and restaurants that are closed at this time, and to let people know about what's going on in their community, the emergency resources that are available, and to do other important communications in times that are not involving a community crisis. I really think that this is underlining our urgent need for that position. But I understand that our lack of resources make adding anything right now a very difficult sell. And that's why I very strongly want to advocate that we do not have the money in the budget right now to buy the Sitgo property. I really strongly want to advocate for removing those costs from the budget this year, which would more than make up the difference in the communication coordinator salary, not to mention the fact that over the total costs that were projected of almost $1.5 million, we could pay a communication coordinator for 15 years if we don't do that project at all, or at least not in the next several years until we hope that the budget is in better shape. It's not clear to me that the reasons that were prompting an urgency about this project still apply. We had hoped that the new owners would be easy to work with and that they would do things like clean up the property for us. So the time-sensitive nature of this project seems to have just evaporated. I realize that staff has already put in a lot of time and effort and that there are some sunk costs in the project, but I would like to make a motion to remove those costs from the budget for this year.
Alderman Widener, I believe that there's all kinds of triage that we'll be doing to the budget as we move forward. I think it would be premature to come up with our own recommendations before we follow along with what professional staff might come up with in the way it triaged. As we move forward with the budget, certainly, there'll be lots of other considerations besides removing the specific project that you speak of. There's special events, there's new events, there's all kinds of things that professional staff will consider as we alter and amend the budget going forward. And that's all Alderman Widener has to say.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Widener. Any other comments? Well, first of all, Alderman Goodman just made a motion. I would have to have a second.
Alderman Ashauer, second.
Okay. Now, if any other Aldermen have comments or questions regarding the motion made by Alderman Goodman, or any other questions for Finance Director?
Can I just chime in and ask, is the motion to amend the budget
Who is speaking? We have to know who's speaking.
This is the city attorney, Brooke Leniman. Is the motion to amend the budget that's been presented?
Alderman Goodman?
The motion is to remove the costs for buying the Sitgo property from the current budget, yes.
I would recommend that this be placed on the next, and this is not noted up as part of the meeting agenda, and I would not recommend taking final action on it when it wasn't on the agenda.
I think she's I'm sorry, this is Administrator Coakley. I believe the motion is to remove it from the proposed budget, not the current year's budget. Is that correct, Alderman?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it would be just giving us direction on the
Okay, all right.
21 budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Otherwise, it'd be a budget amendment.
Does everyone understand?
Yes, this is Alderman Davalos. I just had a question if this is the appropriate time to ask it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I I would like to see this on another agenda also because I would not want to vote on this until staff, just like this until staff, just like the agenda items today, that staff would be weighing in on the current status and what's happening, if there's anything new since any meeting we've had to discuss this. I would rather have it be a separate agenda item with backup before I would vote on this, because I think there's... You know, I don't think we're spending $1 million in this one year, and I think this particular project can be divided into lots of parts, and I would be uncomfortable voting on it tonight without more staff input.
Any other Aldermen? Have any comments?
Alderman Wilson?
Okay. I'm sorry. Was it Alderman Wilson first and then Alderman Kreschel? Okay. Alderman Wilson?
Okay. I do. I don't think this is the proper time for us to be determining to take something out of the budget. We need a lot more explanation on this thing and delving into it. That's fair and appropriate, and then before the budget is finally approved, perhaps we'll have another occasion to do it. But I certainly don't want to vote tonight to reboot something from the agenda without getting further staff input into it and more definitive numbers as to the cost, et cetera. I certainly would not approve of this tonight.
Okay. And then Alderman Kreschel, you had a comment?
Yeah, thanks. I was just gonna basically say the same thing. I think that some more thought and firm numbers would be beneficial before making a decision like that. That's all.
Okay. This is Alderman Berry. I would like to also make the comment that if, even if this remains in the proposed budget and it gets voted and stays as a part of the budget for FY 21, there's always the ability never to go forward with that item in the budget. So we have that option also. So any other comments or questions by the Aldermen?
Alderman Vavir?
Go ahead. Alderman Vavir?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the comment that the last two years I've voted against the budget because the gas station was in there, and if it's in this year's budget again, I will be voting against the budget. And I'm not for moving forward with that, especially what's going on with all the stuff that's going on. And that's it. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Community and Economic Development Director Menzer, do you have a comment to make? I know I'm putting you on the spot. I'm sorry.
My only comment that I would share at this point in time is that, just to remind the city council how we left this subject the last time it was discussed by the group, and that was that we were going to continue from a staff perspective to work with our consultants in the state of Illinois to define a funding plan, proposal for the property that would involve funding the various aspects that need to be taken care of with the property over a period of time, probably three to five years, so it wouldn't be all at one time, and it certainly wouldn't be something that would be expected to be shouldered entirely by the city. We continue to do some of that work. At this point in time, it's a little challenging because some of the folks at the state are not readily available, but I could provide a more detailed update at a future meeting with some agenda backup materials so that everybody has a more informed understanding of where we're at and where we're heading. The last thing I would say is that it's always been intended that even if there are funds included in the budget for the acquisition of the property, that the city council be asked to provide a final decision on whether or not those funds should be directed to closing on a purchase, the purchase on the property. So just because the funds are in the budget, it was never the intent or desire from staff's perspective to have the opportunity to actually spend those funds and close on the property without additional council discussion and formal direction.
Alderman, Administrator Coakley?
Thank you. I'm trying to think through the question I have. I want to make sure that we have the information that the council may wish for the next meeting. As it currently stands, there won't be a committee, the whole meeting between the two council meetings in April because of the whole situation, and we're trying to figure out how to have... We're trying to figure out how to organize the meetings as best we can. So discussion would be added to the city council meeting much as it was tonight. That noted, April 6th is... We still owe the council discussion, coming back from the budget workshop a few weeks ago, there was a request to give more information about how we might be able to fund a communications coordinator. That wasn't included on the special meeting tonight because it was a special meeting, so we don't have it specific yet. We will bring that for the 6th. Is there also the intent? I've heard Aldermen, two Aldermen asked for more discussion, the others saying they would like more discussion and details before we have that. I'm taking that as interest in having a fuller discussion of the Citgo property at the... Excuse me, April 6th council meeting. Is that correct?
This is Alderman Goodman. Someone... Oh, someone could make a motion to, you know, table this discussion until April 6th.
Alderman Wilson, I make a motion to table this until April 6th.
We've got a lot of motions. This is Alderman Davalos. You have a lot of motions here that haven't been voted on, but I don't necessarily have a big agenda with putting it on April 6th. I mean, there's a lot happening right now, and community development is still gathering information. It would be nice to have some of that, and it's trying times, and, you know, I agree with what Administrator Coakley was saying, or else that even though it's in the budget, it doesn't mean it's going to happen without probably several votes from us. So I don't know what it's like. I need to hear from Administrator Coakley about putting something like this on your workload at this point. You don't have all the people there right with you, so I'm a little bit reluctant to put a big research project on the table for the 6th when I know we have so many votes still to go to ever get this thing to happen. Can you comment on that? Administrator Coakley, I don't know what the work, the specific plan of work is right this very month, but I hate to draw everybody away from what they're doing to do this. Do you have any input on that level?
Administrator Coakley, go ahead.
Thank you. Ron could correct me if I'm wrong, but he did present all of the proposed costs in all of the last meeting where we discussed this in detail. Now, that's pending the whole negotiation of this new contract. I think we can give an update and share the costs that we presented at that time. I don't think there'll be a whole lot new that we will have even by the 6th of April. I could be wrong. Anything can happen, but I don't think there'll be a whole lot more. So we could bring that back and put it on an agenda to discuss. I also got from Alderman Goodman's comments preceding her motion that she would like to look at that as possible funding source for a communications coordinator, which, as I said, we still owe you that or other possible funding sources for that position, which we would plan to bring on the 6th. It would have been tonight's meeting, but everything has changed in the world, so I don't think there'd be an excessive amount of new work to bring that discussion, but it's going to be mostly... It'll be a little bit more detailed than what we have right now. I think that we can accomplish by that point.
Okay. Alderman Davalos, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go any further, Clerk Larson, could you read the motion so everybody knows what it is that they're voting on?
There's been no second.
No, there was a second.
There was no second. Okay. But there was a motion, but there was the motion to table. I'm sorry. Okay. So somebody seconded the motion?
Yes. Stuart.
The first motion.
The first one. The second one that... Yeah.
I don't think there was a second on the motion to table.
Oh, there wasn't a second on the motion to table.
The motion to have been discussed again, actually.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Kreschel seconds the motion to table.
Okay.
Okay. The first motion made by Alderman Goodman, seconded by Alderman Ashauer, was to remove the purchase cost of the gas station from the budget.
Proposed budget.
Proposed budget. Okay. We have a motion and a second on that.
Well, the motion to lay on the table takes precedent over the prior motion.
Okay.
You want to vote on the motion to table first and then if it's...
Well, and then it's table to the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. What are we voting on first?
The motion to table. The motion to table.
There's only going to be... You only vote on the motion to table. If that fails, then you can vote on the underlying motion. If the motion to table passes, then it will be table to the next meeting.
Okay. So we're going to vote on the motion to table.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Wilson, seconded by Alderman Kreschel, to table the discussion of the purchase of the gas station to the April... Proposed purchase of the gas station to the April 6th meeting.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on that. Now, we're going to have a roll call vote by Clerk Larson.
Alderman Kreschel.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Vavir.
May.
Alderman Berry.
Hi.
Alderman Goodman.
Hi.
Alderman Davalos.
Hi.
Alderman Widener.
Hi.
Alderman Ashauer.
May.
Motion passes.
Okay. Motion passes? So the first motion is then canceled. I mean, it's tabled. It's tabled. Okay. All right. We're good. Are there any other questions regarding the FY 2021 proposed budget for Finance Director Dahlstrand? Then on to the discussion of the FY 2021 Citywide Work Plan. City Administrator Coakley?
Thank you. Originally, we had noted that we would leave this on here just through the budget workshop, but given everything going on, I wanted to have it on for one more meeting during March. Of course, we can always... It can be discussed as part of the budget discussions, I think, but if there's anything else on here that is specific, that draws your attention now, we can take that direction and bring back the changes at the next meeting.
Okay. Do any of the Aldermen have any questions or comments regarding the work plan? Well, that's the end of the regular agenda. All we need is one more motion.
Alderman Kreschel moves to adjourn.
Alderman Wilson, seconds.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Do I need a roll call vote on that, or do we can just say... Yeah. A roll call?
Probably better.
Okay. Let's have a roll call vote. Clerk Larson, when she gets her papers together.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Hi.
Alderman Widener.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Kreschel.
Hi.
Alderman Ashauer.
Hi.
Alderman Vavir.
Hi.
Alderman Davalos.
Hi.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. It was a very excellent meeting. Thank you very much. Have a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you, Alderman.